Okay, I'll go ahead and call the September 10th Planning Commission meeting to order at 6 o'clock. Can I get a roll call, please?
Chair Nicole Hendricks.
Here.
Vice Chair Jennifer Willard. Sam Skoll.
Here.
Yana Semenova.
Here.
Matt Constantine.
Here.
Ron Heberlein.
Here.
Andrew Carr.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so moving on to citizen input, this is the time that citizens have the opportunity to address the Planning Commission regarding any item that is not already scheduled for a formal public hearing or a public work session tonight. Therefore, if any member of the audience, either here in City Hall or via Zoom, would like to speak about any other matter of concern, please raise your hand or send a message to the recorder using the Zoom chat function so that we may hear from you now. If you have not already, please fill out a testimony card and give it to the clerk. Also, please state your name and address for the record or state that your address is as provided on the testimony card. Please come to the podium when you are called forward or unmute yourself on Zoom when the clerk requests. And I'll check with staff now to see if there's anyone online who is interested in speaking at this time.
I currently have zero attendees online.
Alrighty, and seeing none in person, we'll go ahead and move forward. So, we have the consideration of our minutes from the August 13th meeting that were previously distributed. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Okay, seeing none, the minutes are approved as distributed. And now we're going to move on to our work session. So, we have the work session for the Wilsonville Industrial Land Readiness Project. This work session is a chance for the Planning Commission to gain additional understanding of and provide guidance on ongoing legislative projects prior to a public hearing. As a courtesy, the Planning Commission will, as time permits, allow for limited public comment on the topic after staff have presented their report for the Commission's purpose of continuing to understand the project. It should be noted that this is not a public hearing and any participants are encouraged to participate in a future public hearing for legal standing purposes. I'll go ahead and hand it over to the city team to present.
Good evening Chair Hendricks. Good evening Chair Hendricks and commissioners. My name is Cindy Looksoy, Associate Planner, and I am joined by Dan Pauley for this work session. Tonight, we're looking for input on proposed Development Code amendments for the Basalt Creek Planning Area. And first, I'll briefly review the Craft Industrial, or CI, zone, and provide an opportunity for your additional input, if any, about the proposed code language. And then we'll focus on the new Northwest Industrial, or NWI, zone. Key aspects of this zone include merging the Coffee Creek Industrial Design Overlay District with elements of the Plan Development Industrial and PDI, or SIA, zones, as well as introducing some new uses that are not well addressed in the city's existing zoning code. To briefly touch on the Craft Industrial Zone, the Commission provided direction in May about the purpose and proposed uses. And since that meeting, staff has drafted proposed Development Code text for Commission review, which is included in Attachment 1 of the work session staff report. Key aspects of the code language in direct response to Commission comments include limiting residential and commercial uses to accessory, to typically permitted uses to serve as a transition to and support more intense urban uses nearby, broader and more flexible use descriptions than previously presented, consistent with lists of allowed uses elsewhere in the code, and designed to accommodate future uses that may not be foreseeable today, allowing for adaptability as needs and technologies evolve, and applying the design and development standards of the Northwest Industrial Zone, which was formerly the Coffee Creek Industrial Design Overlay District, form-based code to the entirety of the CI zone. And at this point, we'd just like to briefly pause for any additional input from the Commission about the proposed CI zone language before focusing on the NWI zone discussion.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Looking at my fellow commissioners, any questions or additional input?
No.
Not seeing any. No. Commissioner Heberlein, maybe?
I have a long list, but I think it's all handled.
Okay. I think we're okay. I don't think we have any additional input, so thank you.
All right, thank you. So, we'll move on to the NWI zone. The remaining portions of the Basalt Creek Planning Area include the Light Industrial, High-Tech Employment, and West Railroad sub-districts. As shown, also shown is the Coffee Creek Subdistrict, which is the area within the Coffee Creek Master Plan and existing Industrial Design Overlay District, form-based code. While the focus of tonight's discussion is on the High-Tech Employment and Light Industrial sub-districts, the zoning framework is also expected to apply to West Railroad once the Commission and City Council provide direction on future employment uses desired for that area. The proposed zoning for the High-Tech Employment and Light Industrial sub-districts builds on the existing Design Overlay District and PDI, or SIA, zoning for the Coffee Creek Master Plan area. It introduces a new Northwest Industrial, or NWI, zone, which integrates the design elements of the Design Overlay District, which is expanded geographically to include Basalt Creek, with an updated list of allowed uses and revised development standards drawn from both the PDI and the PDI, or SIA, zones. The standards are updated to reduce redundancy and reflect more current uses. And the draft code language is in Attachment 2 of the work session staff report. A key component of the proposed Northwest, or NWI, zone is the use of a table that categorizes allowed use by sub-district. The used table is in Attachment 3 to the work session staff report. There are slight differences between the sub-districts intended to reflect the desired outcomes of the different land use types identified in the Basalt Creek Concept Plan, including Coffee Creek, which is designated Regionally Significant Industrial Area, which is a specific designation in the Comprehensive Plan, that leads to additional size restrictions for commercial uses beyond those for industrial land not so designated. No substantive changes are proposed for that sub-district. High-Tech Employment, which will have use restrictions to help preserve the available land for higher-density employment and focused industries. Light Industrial, which is most like the current PDI zone in terms of allowed uses. And West Railroad, which is still under consideration with respect to use pending the upcoming joint work session with City Council. The allowed uses in the NWI-zone table are drawn from both the PDI and PDIS, or SIA, zones, and also include proposed additions not currently directly listed as permitted uses. The additional uses are highlighted on this slide. And in subsequent slides, I'll briefly review each use and the rationale for proposing it. So first, hospitals, which would be allowed in all sub-districts. Hospitals generate high-wage jobs with minimal traffic, unlike clinics or commercial uses. Any retail sales or medical office clinic space dedicated to outpatient care within such facilities would be limited, the same as other retail and office uses in the NWI zone. Direct-to-consumer e-commerce fulfillment and logistics has become a major industrial land use, driven by technology and changing consumer habits. To manage land use and avoid displacing other industrial users, the use is proposed to be restricted in all sub-districts. A maximum building size of 200,000 square feet is proposed. This would support a regional hub for a large company or a primary center for a small- to medium-sized business, typically requiring about 10 acres for operations, including truck courts, parking, circulation, and landscaping. On-site customers would be limited to 5% of site trips. And any delivery vehicles, including light-duty vehicles, would need to be kept in a screened storage area. Specialty automotive services doesn't fit neatly into any existing zoning category. Unlike typical auto repair shops, these facilities involve multi-day vehicle work and require screened outdoor storage for parts and vehicles. They operate more like light industrial manufacturing uses rather than retail services. Examples include an auto body repair and vehicle customization shop. The use excludes general auto repair, oil changes, tire services, and dealership-based service operations. This use would be prohibited in the Coffee Creek and High-Tech Employment sub-districts, but allowed with restrictions in the Light Industrial sub-district. Data centers like e-commerce facilities reflect recent technological shifts. While they have low employment density, they demand significant energy and infrastructure. To prevent large data centers in the Coffee Creek and High-Tech Employment sub-districts from outcompeting other industrial uses for limited land, water, and power, staff recommends a maximum of 25,000 square feet dedicated to this use on a site. The size is adequate for local or regional needs. And as precedent, the Siemens Data Center on Southwest Parkway Avenue is about 20,000 square feet. Commercial recreation uses, such as specialized gyms and indoor sports facilities, are not well supported by Wilsonville's current zoning. These businesses need larger spaces and higher ceilings, which most PDC-zoned properties do not offer. They also struggle to compete with higher-paying retail tenants. While not intended for prime employment land in the Coffee Creek and High-Tech Employment sub-districts, certain industrial parcels in the Light Industrial sub-district with physical constraints, such as small lot size or limited truck access, could be suited for these uses. Allowing contractor establishments in suitable areas, such as the Light Industrial District, supports prior discussions about their role in serving nearby construction activity. Once annexed, these uses would be subject to the Northwest Industrial Zone's development standards and design guidelines. I think, okay, that brings us to the end of my presentation. And at this point, we're looking for Planning Commission input about the NWI zone, guided by the questions shown on the slide. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate the presentation. Did you have thoughts on this part? Okay, Commissioner Carr.
I was just going to say, in reference to figure NWI-2, there's no legend that really describes which streets or which types. I mean, I can kind of ascertain, but it would be better if it had a legend.
Anything else?
That's all I got for now.
Any questions?
So, I do have a question regarding the... This might be out of scope a little bit, but the placement of the particular zones. And we talked about this a couple months ago, and it's just been on my mind since then. We have the high-tech area, it's in the purple there, that's adjacent to the 5 freeway, and then the Light Industrial, which is just west of that. So, one question there is, you have that little peninsula in there. Is that Tuolton property or within the Tuolton city limit?
Oh, the white, the area that's white, that's the Craft Industrial area.
That's going to be the Craft area, okay. My thought there is, you know, relative to traffic, if you have Light Industrial or even Industrial, I would, you know, my thought process there would say that we would want that closer to the freeway so that, you know, so the larger trucks aren't traveling inbound, you know, all the way, you know, three neighborhoods over to get to their location. So, if those two were switched, you have the office areas that are kind of in the middle and the stuff that's more heavy traffic along the freeway. Is that something that can be considered?
I mean, I can take that.
Go ahead.
I mean, we... The way that, you know, the high-tech employment versus the light industrial, this mimics what is in the concept plan. And that's how those areas were identified in the concept plan. I think the thought behind having the high-tech along the freeway and those are, it's bigger parcels, they're prime for development of, because they're pretty flat and they're, you know, they have good visibility, they have good access to the freeway. I was part of the reason for designating those for high-tech employment.
Yeah, I would add, first of all, I think this, outside of some access issues with West Railroad, this entire area is relatively close to the I-5 interchange. But other than that, I would also add that the whole consideration of traffic, I mean, there was a lot of thoughtfulness about traffic and land uses that went into the concept planning as well. So, that was an exercise that wasn't done in a vacuum without considering traffic.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Heberlein, go for it.
All right, get ready for your popcorn. All right, starting on the Section 4.13402B2, up near the top of the content, any exterior modifications in terms of what's driving this to come into play? Does it make sense to be as specific or as general as any exterior modifications? You know, if there was a minor change to an exterior of a building, would that then make the new standards applicable?
So, much of what is included in 4.134 is from, you know, the Design Overlay District. So, with that about exterior modifications, I don't believe we changed that from what was in the form-based code from that section. I mean, that said, I think that we could modify it.
You know, I haven't really given much thought to that particular phrase again, so it was kind of a cut-and-paste scenario. I think we also need to consider to what extent this is redundant and unnecessary of what the general standards are for, like nonconforming uses and, right? I mean, without saying any development, including exterior modifications, if it's nonconforming with current standards, would need to meet current standards. And it goes without saying, so we'll make a note of that and look to see if that language continues to make sense in this context.
Okay, and then B3 is similar in terms of talking about, you know, changing an existing sign. You know, if a business sells and they, or they change their name from one thing to another and you change a sign, that then drives the standards to be in effect. It seemed overly restrictive as well, so something to think about.
Yeah, and I think these were originally for design standards or whether they're still applicable for general zoning standards is a good question.
Okay. Let's see, next one, figure NWI-3. So, it appears that there's no pedestrian, no bikes planned for supporting streets. Is that, based on the figure, is that correct?
Yeah, per the diagram, it says shared street. So, it looks as though there are not dedicated bike lanes on the supporting street profile.
Okay, yeah, because I was, when I look at NWI-4 and the through connections, it shows the bikes being common with the traffic lanes. But it doesn't show that in the figure for NWI-3, so I wasn't sure.
I see what you mean, yeah. But it does say in the little table that it's shared street.
Okay. That's what I get for just looking at the pictures. Okay, and then...
These are generally kind of unmarked streets, aren't they, Cindy, the supporting streets? So, more like a residential street that don't necessarily have lanes striped and...
Okay, which in that case makes sense, not to have the markings.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And then, is there somewhere else in the code where the addressing street standards are defined? Because the, it's not shown anywhere in the packet. Does that just default back to regular city street requirements?
That's a very good question. Yeah, I'll check on that.
I think probably, yeah, because, I mean, a lot of those, that's, you're probably correct, but we'll double-check.
Okay. Okay, table NWI-2. In the connection spacing, where it's talking about supporting streets and through connections, I was having trouble following the description on that. And so, whether it's now or whether it's later, it would be helpful to have an explanation of what all that really means. When I was looking at it, I was like, okay, it's 600 feet maximum, center line to center line. But then, there's a lot of, it seems to be exceptions with the addressing, with some of the addressing streets, but not all. And then it talks about day road being separate and then that being no less than 1,000 feet apart. So, I was just having a hard time following through on exactly what was being explained there.
See what you're saying, Ron?
Cool, all right.
I just put a question mark, need clarification?
That'll work. We will work on some clarifications with our engineering team and others.
All right, table NWI-5. I made it through a whole table without anything. That was something. Okay, NWI-5, the primary building entrance. So, in there, it talks about, oh, I guess the first question, is that, is the language around a primary building entrance, is that common language to what we have in code now? And I was asking, I was reading through it, and it talks about, my assumption is the parking lot's not going to be near the addressing street. So, anybody that was coming in to the building and going into the primary building entrance, I wasn't sure if that was going to result in a long walk from the parking area to the primary entrance and if that was intentional.
So, there is some parking allowed on the addressing street.
Actually, one bay.
At the front of the building. It's just limited in number of spaces that you're allowed.
Okay.
So, only your ADA spaces would still be there.
Okay. Okay, I'm less concerned about it then, okay. Okay, and then staying on primary building entrance, the accessibility section. The references to safe, direct, and convenient. I guess safe and convenient, both, direct maybe a little bit less so, seemed a little subjective and wasn't sure if that was the greatest language to be using for that or if it really was needed.
I mean, subjectivity is allowed since this is not residential. And that mirrors other language we have in 4.154 that similar, like...
Okay.
I can't think of a better way of doing it off the top of my head, but...
Okay, that's fine. And overall building massing, same table, the minimum height. What's the driver to have a 30-foot minimum height in NWI?
It's an urban design thing. I mean, when we originally looked at what the day road design overlay, which subsequently became the Coffee Creek overlay and now is being blended in with this Northwest Industrial area, really looking at having that presence on the street to make it look, just to create a... Buildings that really help frame the street. So, I mean, this is a form-based design, these are form-based design regulations, so that really kind of, that really plays into that to create a feeling of, more of an employment district look that's, that density, but I don't know if that's the right word, but it's more about like having clear delineation of the edges of like the public space, urban design. And so, that goes back to, is this going to be an employment area with like two-story office buildings? If not, we do want to still have some high facades along the addressing streets to create that, kind of that look and feel.
Okay, so if somebody wanted a one-story building, they would still need to have a 30-foot facade for the visual design elements?
Correct.
Okay.
I remember many years ago, as an intern, the then Planning Director had me going around taking pictures of tall office buildings around the region to support the development of these types of standards, which become the standard, so, yeah. That's, that was, that's in short, what the intent is there.
Okay.
And there also is a loud adjustment of that minimum by 10%. So, you could be, you could go down to 27 feet, you know, as your minimum.
Okay. All right, getting close to being done. Waysides, subsection dot 11. I was trying to go through, I think especially the table NWI-6 for waysides and trying to visualize what, I think I understand what the goal is, but I was having trouble visualizing what that would actually look like in the development and how the different waysides would be connected to each other. So, yeah, I was just wondering if you could explain a little bit or, I mean, visuals are always great.
We could take a field trip. We do have a couple of these built, yeah.
There's what, three of them out there now? Yes, yeah. But they each only have, you know, Black Creek, Coffee Creek Logistics, and Precision Countertops. They each have one wayside.
Oh, do they?
Yes.
Okay.
So...
Maybe you could describe the design of those?
So...
And how they fit into the overall site?
Yeah, and Delta Logistics will have one as well. So, for instance, the one at Precision Countertops...
Cindy just inspected.
Yes, I did. It's a, you know, a kind of a square concrete area. It has four benches. It'll have a trash receptacle there. It has trees and landscaping around it to provide shade, you know, for people as they come through or if they're just employees, if they like to sit there. And it's right at the front of the building, just off the sidewalk, which all of them are. It's just right directly off the main sidewalk. Let's see, Black Creek is a similar kind of configuration to that, also with benches and receptacles. And it's right where the preserved Douglas fir trees are at the front of the site. The one at Coffee Creek Logistics is a little bit different. It has some kind of artwork, sculpture-type of metal installations. It's a kind of a longer, like, pathway with trees and shrubs and benches. And Delta Logistics will be a similar kind of thing. It's kind of a semicircle off the sidewalk, so it connects, you know, in two places to the sidewalk and it'll have, you know, benches and... So it connects, you know, in two places to the sidewalk and it'll have, you know, benches and things as well.
Alright, I think I'm gonna need to take a field trip, that'll help, yeah, I appreciate that. In N W I six, table N W I six for the enhanced transit plaza. I was trying to figure out whether it would be possible in the current code language for. An applicant to put an enhanced transit plaza in an area where SMART doesn't plan to serve. And I couldn't tell from the way the code was written whether or not that would be feasible. It talks about consulting with SMART. But not necessarily that it, I didn't, wasn't sure whether or not you could.
I'm not clear on the question.
So, in table N W I six, let me get to it, that'll be easier. Twenty of the PDF.
Page thirty-seven of the, of the whole packet.
Wow, thirty-four pages. So in the table, it talks about the, the require, or the ability to put an enhanced transit plaza in. As part of the, the development and that there's some coordination requirements with SMART. But I didn't get a read from the, from the language in the table and I think the note underneath as to whether or not. SMART actually approved the enhanced transit plaza or just that it was created in conjunction. Like the standards and such of the enhanced transit plaza were in conjunction with SMART. And so I just wasn't sure, was there a scenario where somebody could put it in, in an area that SMART didn't plan on actually serving? Which then would be useless.
And we wanna build, so a couple thoughts there, uh, did you have, actually Cindy?
Well, I was just gonna say that, you know, you can't, you, you, um. You really, you can't provide an enhanced transit plaza as part of your wayside unless. SMART is serving the parcel that you're developing on. So, I don't know if that helps to answer your question, because if you, um, like with the first footnote of the table. It says in the future, when SMART serves parcels in the Northwest Industrial Zone. Industrial waysides may comply with the standards for enhanced transit plazas as follows, and then it goes on. So.
So I believe the quick answer to your question is no.
Okay.
An applicant would not be able to build it without the city in partnership with SMART essentially giving that approval.
Okay, that's the intent, okay.
SMART would be part of the development review team.
Okay, great. Alright, and then the table. Do we wanna have allowed data centers with no restrictions in the light industrial sub-district? Is there a reason why we have restrictions in the other two to sizing? I'm assuming it's because of parcel size automatically driving, but I wanted to at least ask the question because if somebody decided to put. Two or three parcels together, they could then put a larger one than would be allowed in the other, uh, zones.
What we've heard is wanting to be flexible there and reflect what's allowed currently in the planned development industrial zone. Which is the case now, uh, the planned development zone. We hadn't received additional direction that there was a, a need to, uh, to restrict those there. I think the risk is limited because of just kind of the geometry of the parcels in this case. Especially, you know, that, cause most of it is that space. Between clay and Basil Creek Parkway.
Yeah.
And then the rest of it, um, sure, um, dense properties could talk if, I mean, they might be interested in that. But that'd be the only other areas where it's likely to happen i- in this case. And so the probability of someone. The likelihood that the site selectors for a large facility like that would go here is pretty narrow. But other than that, just generally wanna reflect what's allowed. Want to, when we're putting in these restrictions and these prohibitions. We want to have some reasonable probability that it's going to be an issue, if that makes sense.
Sure, yeah, okay. And then similar question around the contractor's establishments, um, we don't have any size limits, similar response there?
Yes.
Okay. I'm good, thank you.
Yeah, but if you have input, I mean, you think, there, there, I don't know what the size limitation would be. But, um. Really, the question is, do you feel there's a risk that a contractual establishment would be too big? And unduly consume land in the, in that, uh, light industrial sub-district?
Yeah, and, and while it may not be a large consumer of land right now because there's land readily available elsewhere. That has already consumed a lot of the available land, I just wanted to be sensitive about the potential that as other land is utilized. That it may become an opportunity for that to be used in a way that we may not really want it to all be used in.
It's maybe an acreage limitation or something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, we can explore that.
Thanks for the questions. Um, and then, yeah, I am supportive of the proposed zone and the use of the table. I think my only just observation from the list of uses was like seeing hospital listed, I was like, oh, it's like, just trying to imagine. So that was just, just something that stood out to me, but nothing, no action, just sharing observation. Uh, and then I was curious, this isn't related to the guidance questions, but, um, there's a section in there about required connectivity master plans. For development that happens within the zone. Is that something we ask for for other zones or is that, that, would that be a new request in this zone?
That's a direct carryover from the overlay district.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay, any other final, uh, thoughts or questions?
Again, we welcome any input, and this is draft for a reason, we're bringing it to you here now for a reason.
Yeah, Commissioner Semenova?
Thank you, I, um, I agree with everything that you said, and thank you for the questions. I was curious if, if there is a business that's not listed in here or a type of business. What, um, what is the process for them to apply if they want to establish themselves in that area? But if they're not and they don't fit these categories? Just there's things that you don't think about when you're creating something and is there a process for that?
That's why we have similar uses to those listed.
Yeah, so there, there's kind of a two-pronged approach as we've, we kind of tried to mo- mo- modernize this list. And if you see opportunities to do this better, please let us know. One of them is to not be overly specific, right? We don't wanna write type water, typewriter warehouse in here, right? I'm sure some zoning code somewhere says that. So, alright, so being more general, like warehouse and distribution or something like that, that anything kinda. There's a lot of current and emerging future uses that could fall under that category or be substantially similar. So that's being smart with kind of the level of specificity. Of, of those, of the use types as well as having that general language at the end or other similar uses. So it's kind of that two-pronged approach because, um, we're pretty good on our current use. I think we, we had an old list in the prior Plan Development Commercial Town Center code. That had very specific list of uses that was a bit outdated.
And does it, so do they come and apply and then you take a look at what that is and say, does that fit a similar use category?
Right.
Or not, okay, alright, thank you.
Cause yeah, we can't anticipate everything, like, you know. Flying car landing pad, I don't know, yeah, I'm not gonna put that in the code now, but.
I appreciate that, I was just curious about the process, thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner Skol.
I'm gonna follow along with Commissioner Haberlein here, just to make sure I understand, excuse me. The contractor establishment is, you know, basically, uh, is that a, a, a yard, a storage yard? Plus a building and, and, and can that be in different configurations? Is there a ratio there, building to acreage to kind of follow where, I'm trying to follow.
There, there currently isn't, but I think we're open to those ideas of something that really reflects. Because what we know from contractor, what we've heard, and correct us if this, if we've misinterpreted, if I'm missummarizing this. What we've kind of heard from the commission, uh, over the preceding months is that first of all. We recognize that this is consuming land that would probably be better used by other uses. So that is a concern, but at the same time, it's a use that is, uh, an economic cluster in Wilsonville. That has payroll and is, and brings jobs, but at the same time, it supports other operations and growth in the city. That having those oper- those contractors close helps, uh, on public and private projects here in the city. And also, we've recognized that there are contractors establishments within the city limits. That have been built under urban standards that seem to function and, and fit into industrial areas just fine. So I think maybe we can look more at what some of those precedent developments within the city. That we've found kind of acceptable and see what, what is, I mean, is it, you know, uh. Floor area ratio essentially like square footage to yard area. So, you know, if they do have a corporate office where, you know, they have fifty, sixty employees plus a yard. That's different than just having, uh, an outhouse and ten acres of storage.
Right, correct, okay.
Alrighty, do you have enough input, I, or guidance?
Just if there's any other, particularly, I, I'd say from the, the team and Cindy, you can add what you're looking for. But any other feedback particularly on those, on those uses? Cause I mean, we did our best professional judgment to, to kind of define these and what the restrictions are. But we're really interested in feedback, I think the specialty automotive services is an interesting one. Because that has been kind of a stepchild in the zoning code, if you will, I don't know if that's the best phrase to use here, sorry. But, um. Into my mind comes other terms that my dad would have used, but I won't say those here either. So.
Right next to typewriter factory.
But, we, we've seen both proposed and existing uses that, I mean, obviously, it's, it's. They operate differently than other automotive uses and try to think how those could fit in and where they make most sense. In the code, um, so try to be thoughtful, but, you know, it's, uh, this is an iterative process and we welcome feedback on those.
Yeah, in particular, I'd be interested in your thoughts about the hospitals.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, my initial thought was, I can't really imagine. Do you want to turn on your mic, actually, sorry?
I think the hospital, should we say hospital slash medical building? Because I don't know that we're gonna get a hospital built here, but we might have more medical buildings.
Yeah, I think we, we did struggle to, to find the right term, I forget what that one term we did have.
Well, and we had, we have a definition.
We have a very specific definition, which, you know, I think in, um, kind of our vernacular. When we hear hospital, we think medical center, right? And that's not what the zoning code defines, right? A medical center like, um. Like Legacy, Meridian Park or something is not what we're talking about here. Really, the history of, as some of you are aware of this, is that we did actually have a hospital approved in Coffee Creek that was never built. And that's kind of where I think we're part of the impetus for this is, is that we saw that. On, in that case, it was a mental health facility, an inpatient mental health hospital. And kind of the job density and the traffic and the, the number of high-wage jobs really. Acted more like an industrial use in terms of those goals to have a density of high-wage jobs to, in the traded sector. So. So that's kind of the history why it even came up, is like, why would we put hospital in the industrial zone? But I think if you're talking to medical center, you're really looking at a bunch of vacant commercial land or rezoning. Or some sort of master planning or higher thing if we did get approached for a med- a larger medical center. To be located in Wilsonville. Well, at the same time, if you're, you know, your urgent care or your medical office, if you will, where you go for regular appointments. Would still be more a commercial use because of, and at the level of traffic, the type of commercial activity has been close to other facilities. Of a commercial nature.
So that would fit in the direct-to-consumer? More of like, uh, a physical therapy office, where, where would you put that one, would classification?
That'd be more a medical office than, that wouldn't be a hospital.
Okay.
Commissioner Haberlein?
Thanks. Yeah, I, I wonder if, if hospitals is the right terminology to use? I mean, I, I, uh. Yeah, I'm trying to think of some way to describe it that doesn't conjure up Meridian Park or Emmanuel or, you know, that size of a.
Or even Damish.
Right, yeah, so there's, there's some, yeah, maybe there's, there's some way to.
We've looked for another, if you have some good ideas, please email them to me.
Okay, I'll think about it. In general, the idea is, is sound, I don't have a, a fundamental issue with the idea of, of a, an inpatient facility. You know, something along those lines, uh, because there's always challenges of where to cite those anyways. So I, I think if that's kind of, if that's the, the template that was being looked at and, and why this is, is in there, I'm, I'm okay with that.
So I mean, we could spread it out, I think this is almost what our original one was, but it got too wordy and lost meaning. Was like inpatient medical office and medical research and development, right? And laboratories, right, it just really got really long. And anything where, that's not serving a, kind of an outpatient consumer type thing.
Yeah, inpatient hospital slash specialty medical facility or something, yeah, okay. Um, and then I guess, you know, the, the question around the, the table and the content, and it, I, I think in general, it was a. It was a, a good amount of different types of uses and in general, I'm okay with, with the definitions. And which ones going in, in where. It was fairly general, uh, which leaves it open for future, you know, new developments that we don't, you know, we can't think about right now. Uh, I'm, I'm okay with it, it was well done.
Yeah, Commissioner Skol.
We had one, one additional that I think was talked about before, but I don't see it in here. Was the, uh, commercial food preparation. Some type of food preparation, whether it be for food trucks or, uh, I've seen these types of operations. There's several down in Salem where they prep food for schools and stuff of that sort. And they just, they have trucks come in and pick it up and distribute and, and all that. And that would be a fairly specific type of requirement in terms of structure and, uh, and, uh, infrastructure required.
I think we have some kind of small scale of that in craft industrial, is it in craft industrial? But, yeah, if like you had a school district that wanted to centralize, have a central kitchen.
Artisan food and beverage production and food.
But see, I see that as a little bit bigger than, in my opinion, would be a little bit bigger than a craft industrial.
Yeah, but I'm trying to see if any, I mean.
A little more, a larger.
Is that something that would fall within that just general category?
Manufacturing, processing, assembly and packaging. If I got that inquiry across the zoning counter, I, I would likely say that's, that would fit there.
Yeah, and there might be some warehousing. Yeah, and there might be some warehousing associated with the two, you know.
Sorry, we have a guest who's peering in.
I, I know him well.
Any other thoughts or questions? Feedback on the uses? Okay, seeing none?
Great.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, give feedback. Okay, so time does allow for the commission to take public comment on this work session item. The commission asks the public comment be brief and specific to the aspects of the project under discussion tonight as presented in the packet material and not general in nature or on components of the project, not on the subject of tonight's work session. We'll take comment in the following order: those present in person at City Hall, those participating remotely, any reading, emailed comment, and, yeah. And then as you're given the opportunity to comment, either in person or via Zoom, please state your name and address, or state that your address is as provided on the testimony card, and then present any comment you would like the planning commission to consider regarding the manner before them. Please do your best to speak clearly and directly into the microphone so other participants are sure to hear your comments. After each participant's comments, I will ask the planning commission if they have any questions for the speaker. Is there any member of the audience at City Hall who wishes to comment in person who hasn't filled out a testimony card? Please do so now and give it to the clerk. I see, I see one. And then I'll go ahead and ask for the card. Thank you. Great. Okay. Okay, so Ryan, Shara? Thanks.
That's good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
State your name and address or?
Sure.
Okay.
Ryan Shara, 1121 Southwest Salmon Street, Portland, Oregon, Schentzer Properties. We're one of the stakeholders and property owners. And so, yeah, we've been working with staff and following along and participating as, as we can. And just wanted to provide some comments. You know, we just got this yesterday, so this is fresh for us. And I think overall, from a zoning map standpoint, I like the idea of the Northwest of the industrial zone. I think that's a great idea, just consolidating, make it simple. The uses, I think we're, I think staff did a great job in terms of identifying appropriate uses, at least for the light industrial zone that, you know, we're interested in. As far as the design standards go, we, we do have some concerns just because they're not necessarily conducive to industrial development. And I think it's primarily when you're trying to create a design standard that can apply to office and industrial in one standard, which is hard to do. So a lot of this seems like maybe more urban and office-related type standards, I guess. Our first concern would be the connectivity spacing, connection spacing. So we prepared a diagram, which you could pass on and pass it down.
So like you, we had trouble interpreting what was an addressing street, what was a supporting street, and what was a through connection? This is our interpretation, and, you know, our site is 44 acres. When you take into account what we need to dedicate for future Basalt Creek Parkway to the north, we've got future trails to the east along the creek. On top of that, based on the diagrams, we've got a street going north-south. Oh, thank you. And then we've got the maximum spacing shown, which is 600 feet. So what it looks like is kind of like a, almost like a town center.
Excuse me, Sharon, forgive me for interrupting you.
Sure.
Did you want to stop comment at three minutes?
Let's, it's okay to keep going. I do want to be mindful of time in general, but if you could.
I'll be quick.
Be concise. But thank you, yes, keep going.
Sure, sure. So it's a concern, just because industrial buildings are commonly larger than 600 feet. And if, if these are your streets at 600 feet, go from the street, you got to include landscaping, you got to include parking, and then you start with the building. So then you're talking about a 300 linear foot, feet, foot building facing one of these streets. And in, in the industrial world, that's a really small building. So just taking a look at this diagram, at the end of the day, this takes out 12 acres out of 44 acres. Just, so you're losing a large percentage of a very, you know, large industrial sites are rare, and so you want to maximize the ability for industrial uses to be able to use them. By breaking it up like this, it creates a lot of complications for what types of users can even go there in terms of manufacturing. You know, manufacturing buildings are large, light industrial buildings are large, suppliers, et cetera. So that's kind of the main concern. Other items, you know, like parking, there's a maximum 16 spaces between the front of the building and the addressing street. So in industrial, if you can't park in the front, you're a rectangle, right? Your sides are shorter, so if you can only park on the sides, that's where your parking goes. And in the back, that's where all the function happens. Those are your loading docks. That's, that's where you lot have, you have a lot of truck maneuverability, where you don't want a lot of pedestrians and parking in the back. So it's kind of like, well, where does the parking go? Building height, I think I saw 15 feet for ground floor. Well, in industrial, that's this room. This is 15 feet. So it's very common for industrial buildings to be 36, 40 feet for the type of equipment that they have, whether it's manufacturing or distribution. What else? Driveway width, there's a maximum driveway width of 24 feet. It's really hard to get trucks in and out of 24 feet. So we'd recommend primary and secondary both being 40. And these can be caveats specific to the light industrial. If you're trying to also maintain these standards for the office, maybe there's carve-outs for the, for the light industrial. Retaining walls, our site is significantly sloped. We're going to have to have retaining walls. It just is what it is. It's just geography and contours, you know what I mean? So they have a maximum height of four feet, and then there's a terrace, and then another four feet, and a terrace, and another four feet. If that were to happen on this property, you're going to eat into your property very significantly, and you're going to have nothing left to build on. What else? That was just looking at it this morning and this afternoon real quick, but I'd love to sit down with staff and go through a lot of these standards and kind of work through what the realities could be for light industrial.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. And I'm sure, well, Steph, do you want to comment on, if you're able to, it sounds like you've been very collaborative, so I feel like meeting is probably an option.
Happy to meet.
Okay, that's what I assumed. I didn't want to speak on your behalf. I was like, it was a pretty good chance. I'm sorry. Let me ask any commissioners, do you have any questions for staff or just based on the public comment?
I appreciate the comments.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for taking the time. And then, did we have any public comment via email or online?
No, we did not receive any via email. You didn't receive any, Dan?
Let me double check. I don't see.
And I have no attendees online.
Okay. Okay, great. So hearing no further discussion, that will conclude our work session. And then that just leaves our informational items, which are our normal just City Council Action Minute review and the work program. Does anyone have any questions for staff about those or any other informational?
I just wanted to ask, there was a mention in here about the Civic Academy was interested in rebooting the Boone's Ferry Days events. What happened after that comment, I guess?
Do you know anything, Amanda?
They have been advised that city staff has no resources to assist in that, so if that's something they want to take on, they can form a 501(c)(3) and go from there.
I was part of that last 501(c)(3), so, I get it.
Sounds like another volunteer opportunity.
No.
Come in here right now.
I got, I got enough now.
Fair. Okay, great. Any other thoughts? Okay. Then we've completed all scheduled agenda items.
I would, if I could.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, just mentioned, so to clarify, Mandy's emailed about it, but there is that joint work session on the 6th. That is in addition to your regular meeting. So apologies for having multiple meetings. Appreciate your participation. Any questions or about that or?
Will we get anything ahead of time, or it's just?
Yeah, still be packet materials. We're, we're kind of on a crunch with lining up schedules to get it out, but it, we should be, it should be coming out in the council packet. Cindy may have, do you have anything else on those details of that timing?
The, the plan is to provide you some advanced materials, yes, so that you'll have something to go off of when we get there.
Right, thank you. Now you can pres-
Okay, okay. Close call, because I almost adjourned. Got it. Okay, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, great, then, that, oh, third, a fourth if it, that means the meeting's adjourned at 7:02 PM. Thank you.
Very good.